Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on the agenda, new business, item twenty-two dash one eighty-three, items submitted by council members. Council members, do you have any items to submit?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, I move to add an item to the agenda regarding the ferment start date of Tanya Chapman.
Is...
Second.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I move to defer the start date for Tanya Chapman as city manager to June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, pending the criminal background check in accordance with the charter and review by council.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Council members, are there any other items to submit? Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And fellow colleagues, I have a statement which I would like to make, and I would like this statement added to the record. And this statement is regarding the termination of city manager Angel Jones, June the sixteen, twenty twenty-two, during the regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council from my seat at the council dais, as recognized to speak by the mayor of the city of Portsmouth. To the residents of Portsmouth and other persons of interest, for the past two weeks, I have silently observed the conduct and listened to statements which had no basis in truth made by council members and citizens regarding the termination of the employment of former city manager Angel Jones. My father, Bishop James Marshall Whitaker, the pastor of New Bethel Baptist Church for the past fifty-eight years, told me as a young boy that life is a search for the truth. Therefore, out of respect for the concerns of many regarding the termination of Angel Jones as city manager, I would like to share with you my rationale for voting to terminate Angel Jones as the city manager of Portsmouth. It is my sincere hope that by sharing my thoughts, you will have a basis and truth for how I reached my decision. On March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, I was part of the majority of the Portsmouth City Council that voted four-three to appoint Angel Jones as the next Portsmouth city manager. I made this vote without the advice nor consent of the residents of Portsmouth. With this vote, Ms. Jones became the second African-American female in the history of Portsmouth to serve in this capacity, both of whom I voted. According to section five point oh-one of the Portsmouth City Charter, the city council shall appoint the city manager, and the city manager shall serve at the pleasure of council. Thus, the city manager should always be cognizant of following the will of council. However, several incidents caused me great concern as to whether Ms. Jones had compromised on representing the entire council or the desires of a member of council. First, the first issue occurred in August of twenty twenty-one. A former deputy city manager, Lavoris Pace, who was trusted and well-respected by the community for his humanity and integrity, accepted a position with the city of Norfolk. I was concerned that a person with such respect and institutional knowledge was leaving Portsmouth. Furthermore, I was contacted by elected officials and members of the community who were upset over Mr. Pace leaving and why the city manager allowed this to happen. I was later informed by a trusted and dependable person that the city manager was influenced by a council member who believed that providing Mr. Pace additional compensation was not merited. Ms. Jones never consulted with the council to see what could be done to retain Mr. Pace, a trusted, respected, and beloved part of this community, as the deputy city manager. Ms. Jones should have at least apprised council and not just a council member of this matter, given council an opportunity to inquire on this matter, but she chose not to do so in a person with much institutional knowledge and integrity who had been an asset to the city. Mr. Pace was allowed to leave. The second issue occurred during September of twenty twenty-one. At the city council meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Shannon Glover announced that we have a press conference that will be coming up, and it will be titled Portsmouth Speaks on Tuesday, September twenty-first, at twelve noon. He further went on to state persons and organizations that would be present, including the mayor, city council, the city manager, chief of police, fire chief, our Commonwealth attorney, sheriff, Virginia State Police, FBI, and perhaps the Assistant U.S. Attorney's Office. The mayor called the press conference without notifying or nor informing council and invited local, state, and federal agencies without the knowledge of council. This would be the equivalent of the chair of the school board calling a press conference to announce a major initiative inviting federal, state, and local officials without informing nor discussing with the school board. At the September fourteenth meeting, Vice Mayor Barnes and myself expressed concern about the meeting not following procedure. Council rules provide the guidance that council follows for regular and special meetings. Neither of these was followed. The city manager was aware that this meeting was not called according to proper procedure. City manager Jones attended the press conference, which was held in council chambers, knowing that this was not a council initiative on crime. Because of failure to follow proper procedure, a majority of council did not attend and was maligned by council members, community persons, and the media. This caused concern because, again, Ms. Jones was not acting on the behalf of council, but rather the mayor, who according to the city charter represents one vote. Ms. Jones publicly demonstrated her willingness to follow the mayor and not council, even when proper procedure is ignored, and created a misrepresentation of council to the public. After these two issues, I met with Ms. Jones in September of twenty twenty-one and expressed my concerns. It was at this time that Ms. Jones assured me that the mayor was not influencing her. As evidence of this, Ms. Jones shared how the mayor tried to persuade her to transfer the land located at seven hundred Crawford Street to a certain developer through the Economic Development Authority, even though council had voted not to issue a use permit to the developer. This raised more concern about Ms. Jones because she had not shared this information with the council. It was during this meeting that I shared with Ms. Jones my loss of confidence in her leadership as city manager. Ms. Jones was definitely aware of the nature and implications of my concerns. Moreover, I thought that someone with her experience as a city manager would have been more sensitive with managing a council which appointed her by a four-three vote. The third issue occurred in November of twenty twenty-one. On November sixteen, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Jones, along with deputy city manager Robert Moore, attended a meeting of the Economic Development Authority. At this meeting, the EDA went into closed meeting to discuss the disposition of approximately thirty-acre site, a thirty-acre site located at four oh-nine McLean Street, a thirty-acre site located behind Todd Water Community College. At this meeting, the EDA passed an amendment to a purchase agreement between the EDA and the purchaser. The resolution allowed the purchaser to buy thirty, a thirty-acre site, which had an assessed value of three million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Three million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars was purchased for one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. What a deal. Although this transaction commenced approximately three years before Ms. Jones became city manager, Ms. Jones did not inform council of this significant devaluation of the land. Ms. Jones should have made council aware of the nature of such a transaction. I found it highly troubling that Ms. Jones may not have been aware of this significant devaluation of land due to either staff not informing her, her failure to inquire, or because upon becoming city manager on April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, according to the minutes of the EDA meeting, Ms. Jones failed to attend the April twentieth, the May eighteenth, the June fifteenth, the June twentieth, the October nineteenth, and December sixteenth meetings of the Economic Development Authority. Any of these is problematic. However, it is interesting that she attended the meeting on November the sixteenth, when the resolution was passed, to sell a thirty-acre site assessed by the city at three-point-five million for one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy thousand. How does such a transaction take place in a cash-strapped city where land is a premium without any city council update? Council should have been informed. This pattern of selectively ignoring council made me realize a change of city manager was needed. At the September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one council meeting, the American Rescue Act Plan, ARPA funds were discussed. The handling of the ARPA direct payment issue caused a concern as well. Council made it clear that we recognized that citizens were struggling and needed assistance, and we had the money to assist. Initially, the direct payments were conditioned upon a work program, which council never intended, and then it was restructured to provide direct payments to low-income and ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited Income Restraint Employed Persons. Furthermore, the city manager was specifically told during a council meeting to not make payments on a first-come, first-served basis. Out of respect for our senior citizens, the distribution of the COVID gift card should have been done with more dignity and respect instead of standing in lines and requiring emergency assistance. Matter of fact, I was not even aware as a council member that the distribution would occur in this manner. If Ms. Jones had shared this plan with council, it could have been vetted by council members exposing possible concerns with the process and aligning with the previous directive of not using a first-come, first-served approach. When I asked Ms. Jones about this matter, she stated to me that the turnout was unexpected. I was surprised by her response when the flyers that were distributed mentioned that the gift cards would be distributed while supplies last, indicating a limited supply, which would cause persons to be concerned about availability. School athletic facilities funding is a concern. Last year during our school board and city council liaison meeting, it was clear to the city council liaisons, school board liaisons, the superintendent, and his staff that the athletic field renovations were part of the capital improvement plan, particularly the AC Norcom Field and Complex Renovations. The CIP for this year did not include the athletic field renovations until I requested that it be included in the CIP. I was troubled that the city manager had initially not included the expansion, even though the city council expressed this desire to fund these projects. Minority contracting, I was concerned during our joint meeting of PRHA and EDA that there was no input on the part of the city manager in regards to inquiry or discussion on the issue of minority contracting with PRHA nor EDA, even though city council had passed ordinance two dash one sixty-eight empowering the city manager to establish a program for the purpose of implementing enhancement or remedial measures. In conclusion, many have stated that the city manager was blindsided by the termination. However, the city manager was aware of my loss of confidence last year and non-support by other council members. When I met with Ms. Jones, her major concern was receiving additional severance pay and benefits, which I thought was a reasonable request. Therefore, my decision came with much thought and critical assessment contrary to narratives based on misinformation, emotions, and fabrication. I have served as an elected official from two thousand two to two thousand fourteen on the Portsmouth City School Board, in two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, and two thousand twenty-one to the present on the city council. During my tenure, I have always represented issues of social justice and equity. Being born and raised in Portsmouth, I understand the disparities that exist in this city because of the failure to implement fair policies. Therefore, my stance is naturally in direct opposition to injustice. My intolerance for injustice has made many uncomfortable in both the black and white community. Thus, my presence has been a thorn in the side. Therefore, some of you have used a superficial concern about the termination of the city manager as an opportunity to remove a conscious voice from council. Once again, some have resorted to lies to attack my character, and again, some participate with your silence. So you have concocted stories of corruption, abuse, and personal gain, when you know I have never used my office as an elected official for personal gain nor illegal monetary benefit. I do not even meet with people who have business interests in Portsmouth in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety. Matter of fact, I asked Julius Williams and Reverend Leroy Hill, two men who I respect, about my denying a meeting request with persons who had business interests in Portsmouth. I even rejected the trip offer by the casino developers to visit one of their casino sites. I told each of them no. Even though I knew their requests had no wrongful intent, I direct persons to the city manager in economic development. My value system, which is grounded in respect for my God, my family, my church, my village, and myself, would never allow me to do what has been expressed directly and indirectly by council members, citizens, and clergy. For those of you who know me and even a casual observer, I know you realize that for me to make such a decision to terminate the city manager, it came with critical thinking and substantive reasons, as I have expressed unambiguously in this statement. I hope that as each of you search for the truth, you will do the same. In the meantime, as I have done in the past, when lies and attacks rooted in hate, envy, power, demagoguery, and jealousy have risen against me to silence my voice, I will continue to stand still and let the truth fight my battles. Respectfully submitted, Councilman Dr. Mark Whitaker.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes.
And Mayor, just want to add again that I would like this added to the record. I will email it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
Um, in our May twenty-fifth meeting, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke mentioned accusations of bribery. For me, I think that she owes that to the citizens to provide that information, so I'm asking what the consent of council that we do an investigation and she submit that information to our city attorney so we can find out who's getting bribed.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My statement never mentioned bribery. It did mention that someone came to my office and stated that in order for certain council members to even speak to them, the price had to be right. I didn't use the word bribery, you did. They told me the price had to be right in order to speak to certain council members on this dais. I didn't mention bribery. That's what I said. So if we have something to present, there was a letter that was submitted to the city manager on May fifth at three fifty-four P.M. that stated that someone came to my office, and they was upset because in order to get information from any of their council members about permits, about business license, about the process that a citizen should have without fault, they had to have the price right in order to talk to certain members on this dais. So that letter went to the city manager, and I can forward that letter to the city attorney today.
You have the floor, sir.
I'm totally okay with that. Can we, um, and we get, that'll be presented back to council and also to the people.
Sure, I will take a look at what is provided to me, contact the appropriate sources with the city, and then report back to council.
Mr. Battle, so you have the floor.
For the record, my name is... For the record... For the record, my name is Paul Battle. May I stand?
Please, sir, if you would sit, it's better to, for you to be heard by sitting. I know you prefer to stand, but everyone needs to hear what you're saying, sir. Excuse me?
Point of order to the chair.
A point of order to the chair, you have to state the reason of the point of order, sir.
I don't, I don't do anything to anyone by standing. I, I have a voice loud enough so everyone can hear me. May I go out here and...
The chair has to rule on your point of order, sir.
Sir, sir, your, your point of order is not acknowledged. Please sit down.
Again, my name is Paul Battle. I've been here all my life in our city. Who I am and what I am didn't happen overnight. I've been this way since I was in my early teens. I care for all the citizens, and I proved it through my work and my commitment to making things better for all citizens. When you go down Airline Boulevard, Boulevard Hope Six, Seven, and Eight, all of that redevelopment in my hand had the main portion developed for the funds that we got for that. I worked with our police department, where we've had tremendous success. I worked with the recreation department, where I wrote the yearly curriculums. I've also stated that there's not a man in this city that have given more of his own money to the citizens than I have. I'm not talking about your idols and the business and that, I'm talking about my own personal money. I have coached all over this city for years. I have donated to all of the churches. Never, never have I made it known to them that it was me. See, this is who I am, and everybody knows that my integrity is impeccable. I'm here for the citizens. I don't take wooden knuckles, and I don't get into foolishness. Now, you have the right to know why I voted to allow Ms. Jones to be terminated. First of all, I too know how valuable an element Mr. Pace was to our city and the community and the public. In the manager's office, when I found out that he was going to Norfolk, Ms. Turner, Mr. Pace, the city manager, and myself, we were in there, and I asked her, I said, "Well, um, have you made a counteroffer to him?" She looked at me, and Ms. Turner looked at me, and they smiled. So at that point, I backed off because I didn't want to become intrusive in our government. She had the right not to make that decision. The second thing that kind of swayed my opinion was the mayor and Ms. Jones used to call meetings with the police department to discuss crime, and they would conduct the meetings with one or two council persons there. I constantly told Ms. Jones, "And these are items that I did in public. These are not the items that I can't discuss, that I, that I cannot discuss." So I told Ms. Jones, I said, "Ms. Jones, when you get the police and the community together, you need to get all the council folk because we can come up with a better, comprehensive plan." See, when you do a meeting like that, you have to develop goals from the problems that you have. You have to create the objectives and institute task analysis. You also have to institute timeframes of when you expect marked improvement, moderate improvement, and satisfactory improvement. But she never called us all together. So again, I reminded her, I said, "When you do a couple of city council persons, that's not a team thing, that's a political situation." Let me explain. When a few people call a meeting and they're the only ones there, it doesn't become an effective outcome from what you meet about, it becomes a political situation, and consequently, things haven't gotten much better.
Excuse me, Mr. Battle?
Point of order to the chair.
Wait, no, no, Mr. Battle, Mr. Battle, hold on, hold on, I'm getting ready to explain something to you, sir. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a mayoral privilege, which, which I do have the right to do, and I need to correct the matter that you're speaking to. I do need to correct...
No, you can correct me, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, 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 I have mayoral privilege, and I am going to take mayoral privilege...
Can you cut me off?
I asked you, I asked you to hold on a minute, and I'm gonna take mayoral privilege to correct something that you said so that the citizens understand what it is.
Will you allow me to finish, please, Mr. Mayor?
If you...
I never interrupt you, no matter what you're saying.
Sir, sir, I, I, I'm not interrupting you, I'm sharing with you how the process works. So if you will allow for me to take this privilege, and then you can continue, but I want to make sure that it's clear what you're talking about.
I think the city attorney wants to speak.
Ma'am?
Ma'am, I have the floor. Um, he did note, there is no motion on the floor, but he did note that he wanted a point of order with respect to being able to speak, so you do have to rule on that first.
I do.
And you do have mayoral privilege to make a statement. It is, and once you make a decision about the point of order, then we can move forward on whether there's a appeal of that.
Right. I'm gonna not acknowledge that point of order for the mayoral privilege at this time, and then he can begin to speak after, he can certainly ask for the floor back. But one of the things I think that's important for everyone to know is that we are precluded as council members to come together unless it is a formal council meeting as a council. So when meetings are called, we are precluded to be together because of laws that restrict that for the obvious reasons. Council members will be and have been informed of meetings, they were aware they could attend, but what happens is we are not allowed to speak as a body on those matters. We can listen, but we can't speak as a body on those matters. So in no time was any member of council restricted or not allowed to come to any meeting. I just wanted to make that very clear. Sir, would you like the floor again? Sir, would you like the floor again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When there's such a meeting called, it is not effective unless all of the participants are there. We talk about including and inclusion and all of those things, but we're not working in that direction. Now, when we meet and we come out of these meetings and all of us are not there, they, they're, they're not effective. Things don't get better because the folk that are meeting don't have the experience to set the criteria in which I lay, just laid down to you. So after several occasions saying, "We need to have these meetings with everybody and it's the city manager's responsibility to make those meetings accessible to everybody." The mayor might be free, but if we're all are not free, why would you call a, a meeting like that? Again, that becomes a political situation. The final point that I can talk about before I close and respectfully say thank you to everybody for listening. About a month ago, the city manager mentioned to me that she was negotiating bed spaces that we don't use with Hampton. At that point, I said, "Well, are they paying the full price or what percent of the bed space are they paying?" She said, "Well, they're paying 25%." I said, "Well, you know that you can't negotiate on behalf of the council without getting permission from the council." So I said, "You need to come to the council and get a request." So about a month later at the meeting, a couple of meetings later, uh, she mentioned and brought it to council and we gave her permission. That was the night that we terminated her employment. That morning on TV 10, Portsmouth and Norfolk had already made an agreement, come to an agreement. We also had a member on the city council negotiating, who knows better? Now, when Mr. Pace was here, the same folk called him about negotiating those bed spaces. They were gonna give him full price, but he spoke with them and told them that we didn't send folk there because the place is not, not up to par and we can't duck liability. You can say that the jail, the regional jail will assume the liability, but liability's not transferable. If we send consumers to that jail and we know all the problems that we have, we're liable as, as the city as well. So that was another reason that I backed away. I wanted to give, as these gentlemen did, the COVID money to the citizens. Ms. Angel Jones decided that she wanted to do something else with it, infrastructure or something. So we went on for about four or five meetings after we had told her that we wanted to give funds to the citizens because of the hard times and so forth. After the fifth meeting in open session, I sat here and looked at her and said, "Ms. Jones, what are you not understanding about the fact that we want to give these citizens some relief with these COVID funds?" At that point, she started to move in the direction to listen to the council and to provide funds for our citizens. So as you see, I had to take the government back. I had to make it work for you and I hope that you understand that this was no pleasure of mine that we let her go. I got no joy out of it. I worked with her quite a while, a while and I, I, I tried to help, encourage. Another thing, when folk would get killed in the city of Portsmouth and we had major crime, she would only call a few of us. She would never, I would have folk in the, in the street to call me and say, "Mr. Battle, you know about this, this, that and other." Let's talk about 420.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Battle, Mr. Battle. I, I, I'm, I'm calling again a personal mayoral privilege because you're making statements against someone who is not here to defend themselves and there is no way to validate those claims?
The statements I make, Mr. Mayor-
Sir, sir, so I have the floor, Mr. Battle.
Were in open session.
Mr. Battle, I have the floor. Right now, I have the floor, sir. What I'm sharing with you is you're making statements. You are making statements, sir, and I'm gonna ask you one more time, sir, to refrain from that and if you continue to not follow what I'm asking you to do, I'm gonna have to ask that we do something different. And so we're gonna have to move on to another speaker. So, so I, 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 I wanna take a point of personal privilege as the mayor and then I'll come to you, sir, and, and then we'll come to the others. You, you, you know, it, you know, I'm thankful that, that, that I have, that I have as a, as, as an individual, my integrity and my character in place. I wanna read to you a couple of things were said or, 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 um, mentioned that I'm, I'm gonna set the record straight on it very clearly because some of the conversation that Dr. Whitaker just men, mentioned was specific to Mrs. Jones' relationship with the mayor. As an elected leader, as the elected mayor of the city of Portsmouth, it is part of my responsibility to work closely with any city manager. And so that's a part of it. But I wanna read to you all something very clear because I wanna, I wanna deal with a couple things that were said in relation to Mr. Pace, in relation to the decisions of the city manager to run our city. Uh, and before I do that, uh, before I do that, I wanna make it very clear that my mother used to say, "There's three sides to a story. It's your side, my side, and somewhere in there is the truth." We can speak very eloquently to an issue when someone is not there to defend themselves, but I have been in the room, so I know what happened. But I wanna read something to you as it relates to the duties of our city manager, the appointed person that we appoint as members of council. This is from the city charter, section 5.01, "City Manager. The city council shall appoint a city manager who shall be the executive and administrator, not the council be the executive administrator, head of the city government. The city manager shall be chosen solely based on the basis of his or her professional qualifications and shall serve at the pleasure of the city council." But it goes on to say, and it goes on to say about her duties or his duties, section 5.02, powers, powers, which means that she is granted certain authority, powers, powers and duties of the city manager. The city manager shall be responsible to the city council for the efficient and professional administration of all affairs of, of the city. The city manager have, shall have the power and duty to do the following. To see that all laws and ordinances are enforced, except as otherwise provided in this charter or by law, to appoint and manage all employees in all departments, offices, and agencies of the city. The city manager may delegate this authority among the manager's appointees, not the council's appointees. For all such persons appointed by the manager, the manager shall have the power, shall have the power to discipline, subject to applicable law, assistants and deputies to the manager and department heads appointed by the manager, shall serve at the pleasure of the manager." Why is that critically important? It's critically important because you just heard one of my colleagues say that they got involved with the day-to-day operation, which is prohibited by our charter and a misdemeanor under the law and if you are found guilty of that misdemeanor, you can be removed from office immediately. In the issue of Mr. Pace, let me be clear. Mr. Pace, and I, I, I apologize, Lavorous, because Mr. Pace is a friend of mine, but in the issue of Mr. Pace, he was offered a competitive job by the city of Norfolk. Mr. Pace had done a lot of work here in the city of Portsmouth. Many of us enjoyed his company and the work he performed, but what the city manager was involved with, he was given a salary range. The city manager had looked at it and they had discussed it. Mr. Pace was not forced out of the city of Portsmouth. And if you don't believe me, you can ask him. Mr. Pace chose to go back to the city that he lives in, Norfolk, Virginia, and accept the salary and the position that Norfolk offered to him. I am still friends with Mr. Pace, so I don't understand how we get to this point where the city manager somehow forced Mr. Pace to leave. People in that capacity, it is a competitive environment. And by the way, I even called the mayor of Norfolk and I said, "Mayor Alexander, what are you doing over here talking to our people?" He said to me, "Mayor, he's a good one and we want him over here." So they offered Mr. Pace a job and Mr. Pace decided to leave. And that is the truth. And if you don't believe me, I'll call Mr. Pace and ask him to come and tell you that story. But moreover, once again, as I said, the manager is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the city. It is not the job of anyone on this dais to instruct the manager to instruct her employees what to do. That is what the facts are. So I wanna be clear, when people come up to you and tell you this kind of stuff and make long dissertations about what, you know, they believe is the truth, it just ain't so. The other thing I wanna deal with, which is critically important, which is what we've had a problem with, if you wanna know the truth, the majority on this council has tried, as I said the other night, to usurp the power of the manager. So much so, it was never indicated, if, if it wasn't true, then why do you call the city manager to your church and you don't share that with everybody on council? Now, here's, here's, here's the hypocrisy of that. You're gonna say the mayor doesn't share everything with you, right? Listen to me, let's, let's get down to business. You're gonna say the mayor doesn't share everything with you and we all don't talk together, but when you choose to call the city manager who has done a bang-up job to your church, which is totally out of, and it's totally out of order. It is totally out of order. If, if she should've been called anyplace, she should've been called to the city hall and he should've met her in this building. That was a clear violation of just ethics in my book and ethics matter. We talk about integrity, let's deal with integrity. So you call her to your church and this wasn't the first time Ms. Jones had been threatened. I will tell you, and I don't care, you can, you can, you can litigate, you can call it because here, the best defense against defamation is the truth and I'm here as God is my witness to tell you the truth. We were in a meeting, in a closed meeting, and one of my colleagues said, and you can figure out which colleague he was, he said to Ms. Jones during her evaluation, she was working very hard to bring all of the things to our city. Sir, 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 you do not have the floor. I have the floor.
Um, Mayor, at a, a point of order takes privilege. You have to rule on the point of order, you have to state what the point of order is.
What is the point of order?
I think that it's unfair that you insinuate and you know the names and won't tell the-
The, the, the point of order is not recognized. The point of order is not recognized. Let me be clear. So as, as, as I was saying, as I was saying in, in, in my discussion, so this was said to Ms. Jones during the evaluation. You need to be careful what you're doing. You need to be careful of hanging around with the mayor. Now, I ask you all the question, as I said, I'm gonna be clearly transparent, who does that? Ms. Jones had been a manager in cities before and had done it successfully. She certainly understands her role as it relates to this document, which is the only document that matters. The majority of this council, many of them want to do her job. They wanted to do her job to the degree that they micromanaged everything she did. Let me give you another point. Remember, remember during this process, during the hiring process for the city attorney, if you remember, the, the other city attorney, not you, Ms. Attorney Lavanda Graham Williams, but that other attorney who we did not hire. Remember that the mayor called a special meeting to discuss the hiring process. Guess what, y'all? See, in our charter, what, what one of, what they don't understand is the mayor plus three members of council can call-
Point of order.
Or, or three members of council can call a special meeting. What is your point of order, sir?
What happened with the city attorney has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Sir, your, your, your point of order is not recognized, it's not relative to what I'm talking about. So here's what the situation is. When, 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 when I called that call meeting, I'm just giving you some examples because we heard other examples. When I called that special call meeting, guess who boycotted the meeting? Four members of council boycotted that meeting. Which, guess which four didn't show up? So when, when, when you talk about, you, you know, it's incredible when people come up here and talk about what people are doing and they want, they want certain privileges and power, they want equity and they want all these terminologies, but when it comes to them participating, whether they agree with it or not, they chose not to stand up. And I will say the last thing, this whole thing on the violence, I can share with you. Angel Jones, her team, they met with those mothers, they called them in, man, they cried, they brought in, they brought in people to help them to get the services they need. It, it, it broke my heart. It, it was the most moving event that I had ever witnessed in my life. Angel Jones is a mother, she has a son, and she embraced those women and she worked very hard with all of the stakeholders to improve the situation. And I want you to know, regardless of what everyone says, and let me just say this last thing, since we talking about integrity, I run a business here in the city of Portsmouth. My wife and I ran childcare centers for 20 years in the city of Portsmouth. My wife Paula loved those children like they were her own. And I can tell you that one of the most difficult decisions was when we had to transfer ownership, but we transferred it to a great group of young ladies who are doing a phenomenal job. My business, my business is based on the integrity that I have. I sell truth and trust every day of my life. And what I will tell you is, if you wanna go looking for integrity, you ask around town about Shannon and Paula Glover. We are integrity-based people with integrity-based vision and we love this city. I came here 30 years ago as a 25-year-old corpsman in the United States Navy. My wife and I were born here, our daughter, who's a licensed attorney in the state of Virginia, was born here and our son, who is a former army member, was born here. It's not about questioning whether we love our city or not. I believe my colleagues up here love this city, but here's what I know. In the issue of treating Ms. Jones equitably and fairly, it was personal, as you can see. And the thing is, this woman moved her house here. She moved her house here. She took a chance on Portsmouth to do the best for Portsmouth and she was doing it. I shared with my colleagues that the Secretary of Public Safety of the state of Virginia, Robert Moser, came here and brought his whole team and the Attorney General's office. And you know what he said to us when we were in the meeting, the Commonwealth's Attorney The Commonwealth's Attorney was in there. Our, our interim city manager, our chief of police was in. Vice mayor was invited to that meeting, were you not, sir? Okay. But the vice mayor had another engagement. He got there a little late. We understand, things happen. So what I want to share with you, what he said to us was this. Portsmouth, we're here because Portsmouth is doing a lot of good stuff in helping to reduce gun violence. And we know that it's a long game, that we came out of the pandemic. We know that we've got a lot of things to work through. But we know and we see the leadership that's here and we're committed, our chief, our police, they're working, our sheriff's office. Everybody is all in on this game to reduce gun violence. We need the citizens. And we did a press conference. And we said to the citizens, we need y'all to help us. And it hasn't been great going forward. But I can tell you, there is no one more committed to, to, to reducing gun violence, giving our kids hope and a real shot, helping our parents, than the folks up, up here that, that, that are representing that. And I just wanted to be clear. All of this stuff, you can write down anything you want. I have never taken anything, and if anybody's got the proof, show it to me in writing. I have never taken anything that I didn't earn. And my mom always told me, you always do the right thing so you never have to come through the back door and you never have to worry about it coming back on you. So I want to make it clear that whatever the mayor has done, it has always been in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. And I will continue to serve you until you decide that you would not have me serve you anymore. Um, Councilman Woodard, then, then Councilwoman Lucas Burke, and then Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, you, you know, it's been a couple of meetings we had already. And, um, you know, I've been waiting for the mayor to, um, to elaborate a little bit honestly, I'll say. Um, he just called me for a, since these meetings are secret meetings, he called me for a secret meeting on Sunday. And, and we talked about our relationships. We, we talked about improving communication because these are the things I said on the dais. And he admitted that he failed in communicating with us as a council. Um, I, I elaborated that. I, I'm fair as a council person in closed meetings. I'm fair on the dais. And he acknowledged those things. But when we come out here, he wants to group people together, pull the, the strings on, on your hearts and, and act like something else is being concocted. So, you know, I, I really wanted to give the mayor a chance to, to be honest about, um, some of his colleagues and, and stop grouping them together and understand that all of us are here to work together in, in, in different capacities. Because that's what you talked about when me and you met last Sunday, if it was a genuine meeting. That's what he was trying to do. So, but once again, I don't want to throw, throw dirt on Ms. Jones' name. Um, like I say, fantastic woman. Um, I had no malice against her. I enjoyed working with her. Um, but it was some things that, um, I cared about and that's just the safety of our city. We have a lot of projects coming here. We have a casino that's coming here as well. And my thing is, my thing is, we want to make sure that we're being proactive besides reactive. Um, a lot of citi, a lot of citizens are concerned about, um, a lot of the elevated violence. And, and what we don't want to do is make sure that we don't have the, the proper people in place, okay? Um, one thing that we know about the city manager is what? It's a dual role. It's a dual role. They take care of the city business, but they also take care of our public safety. And we want to make sure that we can improve on our public safety. Want to make sure if we can double up on it, then hey, that's what we need to do. And, and for the most part, I think that we have looked at that position and we restructured it. Um, it's a lot of things that Ms. Jones and I talked about in the past, um, pertaining to things that I questioned her integrity. And I think that I was fair in her evaluation. I think I gave her the benefit of the doubt. And once again, I'm not here to throw dirt on her name like anybody else. Uh, but what I can say is that our meetings together, I talked about potential, uh, projects or, or the vision of Portsmouth going forward and, and I, and I think we can do that as colleagues. I think we can do that as, uh, council members to see where our city is going and to talk about those things. And it was some projects that were presented that the city manager said she talked to the mayor about. And that's illegal. You're supposed to present that to the council and, and let us know exactly what's going on. So, so my thing is, my thing is.
Please, order in, in the chamber.
She asked to distribute some of that information to myself and the col, my colleagues and I declined because it's supposed to be presented to us as a council. So it was some things that I questioned. But it was also some suggestions based off safety that I think that we had to do. And once again, it was ignored. So all I care about is the overall safety of our citizens. A lot of people are, a lot of people are dying each and every day. And a lot of people are dying each and every day.
From the crowd.
And, and my thing is, I want to make sure that this city can, can be proactive in, in the safety of our citizens. So that was my stance on it. And, and hopefully you guys will understand why I made my decision.
Thank you, sir. Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we can all agree that, um, I think this is a coward group of men who would choose to. Okay, Jesus rode in on a donkey and, and that, that word is in the Bible. Okay, but I, I, I think we have a coward group of people who would choose to attack our former city manager in this manner when she cannot be here to defend herself. Okay, we, we never called a meeting. We have an opportunity to come together as professional men and women to sit down and have a discussion about any of this stuff. And a lot of this stuff is the first time any of us are hearing this. This is not how you conduct the city's business. We should have been called in a special meeting to discuss any other matters that they had of concern. This is, this is horrible, to degrade this woman. Like I said, women are being degraded. To do this, not in her presence, not give her an opportunity to defend herself on these issues. Okay, so I'm gonna move from that because y'all, I'm getting there and I need to bring it back down. Second thing, um, if we could have our city attorney to get with the city attorney with the Hampton Roads Regional Jail to call a special closed meeting or closed session meeting so that we can bring this council up to date on the matters of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail so that we can stop throwing out rumors. I have not negotiated anything. I am the chair of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail and I act on behalf of this council as the liaison, which I was appointed by this male counsel. Third, um, on this Saturday, it is Juneteenth. And there's a play that was written by a sister-soror of mine, Sherri Bailey. Abolitionist Museum, um, will be held on June 18th, on Saturday, 3 to 5, at the Book Club. Uh, these are some of the players. Um, it's gonna give an account on Juneteenth, how we got to Juneteenth. Um, it should be a really good play. Um, it is free, is open to the public. So if you're free on Saturday from 3 to 5, then join us at the Book Club for this, uh, play written by Sherri Bailey. Um, and last, uh, today started Sunset Thursday. I would have rather been there than, than here tonight. Uh, but these are the series of Sunset Thursdays that begin on Thursdays at 7:00. So if we're out of here, I doubt that we will be. We have 14 speakers. You have five minutes to speak each. That's an hour and 10, 15 minutes that we should be here if everybody uses five minutes. Uh, but thank you for your time and I look to talk to you again soon.
Thank you, Madam City Councilmember. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to everyone. I came here tonight thinking I was coming to a council meeting, but instead I walked into a trial and had all the elements of a, of a trial, except one. We had the prosecution present their case, but we haven't had the, uh, the defense present her case. I think it's very cowardly to read a laundry list of charges against Ms. Jones. And as my colleague, Lisa Lucas Burke mentioned, uh, that was news to me. And I say that because just a few weeks before she was fired, uh, I didn't hear any of that in a closed meeting. And in fact, once again, her evaluation, she, she graded out average. Nor did I hear any one, before you normally fire someone, uh, you talk about their shortcomings and you give them a probationary period to correct it. Didn't hear any of that. And that's how professional people, especially professional elected people should operate. You, you know, judgment, integrity, humility, uh, I think are, are essential to an effective council member. And those three things on four people up here are sorely lacking. You know, Ms. Jones has been totally attacked here tonight. I hope she, I know she'll probably watch what's going on. And I'm hoping that she'll rebut that because there's a lot to rebut. The bottom line is, you folks came here for a meeting, not, not for, not for a trial, not for attack on Ms. Jones. And I've heard a lot of stuff that I could rebut about council members not being part of negotiations. We're not part of negotiations. We're the end product of, of negotiations. We presented the deal and we do thumbs up, thumbs down. We, we don't, we don't sit at the negotiating table with a developer. That's not our job. You don't want us to do that. Although some people up here publicly, uh, wanted to shake down developers. Yeah, I, I, I hear you and you're right. And, and some up here turned down. I heard a, a, a mention of a vacant parcel of property right across the street, uh, called Phase 2 of Harbor Vista. Four people up here, uh, destroyed that. That's why it's still empty. That's why it's still off the tax rolls. So, so those up here that, that are so interested in getting involved in, in negotiations, I wouldn't want them negotiating a glass of water for me. Because I, I really don't, I really don't think they're capable. But that's up, that's up for you folks to decide. I'm ju, I'm just concerned that we're not doing the business of the people when we're holding trial, uh, and, and only one participant is here to, uh, to do the prosecution. And, uh, Madam Clerk, I will say if, uh, Ms. Jones, uh, does, uh, offer rebuttal, I too would want that added to the minutes. Because what, what's been added to the minutes is not factual. And, and I'll end by saying, the governor doesn't have to pardon people with integrity and innocent people. I, in my case.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Mayor. And I'm quite sure that, um, those that heard me speak and, um, those that are amused by some of these comments, um, I'm quite sure that you will know that my comments are public record and for you to review. I am troubled by the personal comments that have been made that some of you are finding amusing, um, that Mr. Moody to, to refer to my good name as, as cowardly. I, I find it cowardly when you fight a woman in the street. That's, that's cowardly. And let me just, let me just say this, that, um, the, what you're talking about, all of this unexpected firing, you were part of the group that fired the first black city attorney, Solomon Ashby. Fired him on the spot. You, you, you were part of the group that fired Andre Thomas as the auditor for which this city had to settle a $300,000 defamation suit. And, and you have the audacity to come up here and speak as if our memories are lost. And so I just want to make it clear that what I read is no attack, is factual. And that what I read is in line with what the mayor stated, that the manager in Section 502 of the city charter is responsible to the city council. And what I laid out here, where my rationale, which showed that there was not responsibility to the entire council. And I know that there are those out here who are excellent at reading. And that's why my statement is in writing. And so when you read my statement, you will see nothing in there where I said that LaVores Pace was forced out of this city. I didn't say the city manager forced him out of the city. You read it for yourself and come to the truth. When I made my statement, this statement didn't say anything about the mayor doesn't share with council because it wasn't about what the mayor does. It's about what the city manager did. And so I just want to make sure that it's clear what this statement portrayed and that for those of you who are buying into all of this emotionalism and buying into all of this demagoguery where people can make statements.
No comments from the, from the audience.
And they're counting on you not to be intelligent, but to be emotional. And when you keep bringing, you know, hey, all of this talking back.
Sir, sir, we, 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 I, I, I. First of all, first of all, I'm the chair. I decide how the meeting is conducted. That is not your, that is not yours.
So I'm just asking for respect.
I have asked, I have asked, actually the people that are cheering, they're cheering for you, sir.
No.
So what I will say is, please refrain from comments in the chamber. Because Dr. Whitaker wants us to show him respect.
I want the council to be respected, not just me.
Sir, but you're talking right now. That's why, that's why I gave it to you, okay?
You're getting caught up on the emotion and not the economics. You're not, you're not looking at the economics and you're about to make the same mistakes that we have made in the past. And you're about to give up power to people who do not have our interests because you have been misled and that you have been given misinformation. And you know that I have been sitting on this council and I have been speaking to issues that have tried to uplift our communities. And so when, when, when we make, when we make the statements that we.
Sir, 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 in the back. You're, you're out of order. This chamber has to keep decorum. If you persist in speaking loud, I'm gonna have you removed from the chamber. Sir, sir, that's, that's a warning. The next time you're gonna be removed from the chamber.
That's not a warning? That's, that's not a warning?
Sir, 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 I, I'm the chair, okay? What, what I'm trying to share with you, I'm the chair. Sir, please be seated. Please be seated. You may continue, sir. You may continue, Dr. Whitaker.
When we, when we look at our community and we see the economic disparities that have existed here and for you to think that I am up here out of some type of pay-for-play benefit, okay? And if you do, bring it to the table and make it very specific. But I do notice that there was no comment about the devaluation of the 30-acre piece of land in this city. I, I noticed no, no comment was made about that. How does a piece of land go from 3.5 million to $156,000 and council is not made aware of it? And what is even more troubling is that these attacks on our character. It's interesting that the developer that gets that type of deal also contributed to the mayor's campaign. And so I don't see any outrage over these type of things. And so, I don't see any outrage over these type of things. But yet, you get outraged over misinformation, lies, and concocted stories. And if that's what you want to follow. And for some of you who feel that you have been lied to and misled, some of these things have come to our attention here lately. And so, I just want you to know that whenever I make a decision, I don't make it flippantly and I do not make it trying to harm anybody. I made it, and I can make it where I want to make it. As long, as long as it is legal. As long as it is legal. And so, I'm saying to those of you, my statement is on record. You read it. And if you have any questions about it, you ask me about it. And let's see if the truth is there.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor. Okay, well, at this time, I think we've exhausted that story for now. And if I may, if I may, I'm going to take mayor's privilege and I am going to say to everyone, we're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back with the non-agenda speakers. Is that fair to everyone? Thank you. Five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 7:17. We now call the meeting back to order. And before we move on to Agenda Item 22-184, Councilman Moody did have one more item to submit under Items Submitted by Council.
Actually, this is a good thing, believe it or not. Yeah, we need good news. We had good news last Tuesday. The mayor and I attended the police swearing-in of six new officers that'll be helping to protect our city. A fine-looking group of six. They're eager to go to work protecting our city. We certainly need more of them, but that's a, that's a good start. And hopefully, their swearing-in ceremonies will be occurring with an increasing pace, if you may. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And one thing I did want to share with the citizens, I had the opportunity to represent Portsmouth two weeks ago at the United States Mayor's Conference. And if you don't know, that's the conference where all of the mayors get to come and share ideas, meet with leaders of the federal administration. Kamala Harris was our keynote speaker on the first night. And we get to meet with Housing and Urban Development. All the federal department leaders are there to let us know and update us to what is happening. I can share with you that a lot of the conversation did center around workforce development, helping our young people, and reducing violence in our communities. So I have ideas and I'm compiling all that information to share with my colleagues on council so that we can all have a roadmap and have information that will ultimately get to the community and continue in the efforts that we have already deployed to continue to reduce gun violence. And before I move on to the next item, I want to thank all of those individual groups that have signed on with our city, your city, to work collaboratively to help reduce gun violence in our community. And I want to thank all of the citizens. I know it's been tough and you guys have been hanging in there, going through a lot of stuff. But I truly mean this when I say it. It's going to take all of us and doing a lot of different things to make the lives of our children and our families better, and we owe it to them. We are a Portsmouth family. And you don't let family fall down without lifting them up. So I just wanted to make that and thank you. And I ask that you continue those efforts. And you know who you are. Continue those efforts because they are making a difference. Now we have moved to Item 22-184, Non-Agenda Speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir, you have five minutes. And please, when you come forward to speak, please include your name and address because we have to add these, these comments to the record. And in the event we need to respond back to you, we need your name, address, and information. Thank you.
Good evening, city council, mayor, citizens of Portsmouth. First thing I want to say before I get started, he who is without sin cast the first stone. I'm here again to speak for the voices, men and women, who have lost their lives to gun violence. In February, I alone warned you guys of the upcoming onslaught of violence that would happen in our city if we didn't get in front of it, front of the problem, that many of you may not have been taken serious enough to act on it. The current state of Portsmouth is in turmoil. The previous crime prevention plan was example of the failed leadership of council and all who participated in the development and approval of it. You currently have a revised plan on the Portsmouth Police Department website that states it being a living document created with collaborations from all available city resources. But again, it fails to adequately state how and where do citizens go to receive any assistance needed when faced with such crises as gun violence. Most of the information in those policies are reactive approaches to crime prevention, such as your violent interpreters and your trauma counseling. Where are they? I see them in your plan, but we don't know who they are. I know this because I have a meeting for the past four months, meet with several parents who have lost children to gun violence, and the city has never said nothing to these women. And they are here right now to contest that. You have, you received a grant last year, right, for gun violence intervention. Where did the funds go? Nobody knows. Is it a secret? Is it certain organizations that receive them? But again, I'm just saying. What about the CCTVs that is needed in the high-crime areas that you put in your crime prevention plan but mentioned nothing other such? You mentioned nothing about CCTVs. You mentioned nothing about license plate readers. You didn't mention nothing about working cameras at the intersection where two persons that I know were killed at an intersection that we may have caught if the cameras were working. But I'm just saying, city council. So again, what are we doing? See, we're using words to make things appear that we're doing something. Well, what about the action? These issues were here last year. And if you can go back and look at the YouTube videos, we're talking the same language that we did last year. But I'm just saying. The next person that I feel that's going to be on the chopping blocks is the police chief. Because y'all voted for him. Y'all selected him. And I feel sorry for him because y'all playing, y'all picking and choosing. Y'all playing the blame game. But again, what organizations do you have in this city that help the citizens who are experiencing gun violence? You can't tell me such, there's no tangible information out there. And if it is, I think that our organization, Unseen Tears, who meets with every, most of the mothers who have experienced gun violence, there should be some kind of connection with us. But again, we picking and choosing. We're fighting a battle about things that have nothing to do with the citizen of Portsmouth. But I'm just making a statement. I'm going to say this. I spoke with a woman last night at our meeting. She got a phone call from the Portsmouth Police Department and they told her that her life is in danger. And the Portsmouth Police Department told her, "We are not a security force, so we just want you to be aware that there's something going on with somebody threatening your life." Now, does that make, sound like transparency to you? That don't make any sense. But again, I'm just speaking. Now again, I'm going to speak on behalf of all these still unsolved murders in the city of Portsmouth. Charles Mosley, Corey Terry, Emmanuel Terry, Jaquan Johnson, Antonio Atkins, Colton Dodd, Tashie Wolf, Jase Bazemore, Anthony Skeeter, Rayquan Morgan, Tasia Hicks, Jamal Kinghead Howard, Darian Grayson, Dalvin, Amanje Lee, Demond Sykes, Lakeisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Josh Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Nowell, Yashin Curry, James Hill, Dante Collins, Robert Aldis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javard Williams, Kamadre Howard, Quan Epps, Oma Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Tim Shine, Brian Williams, Maquell, Curtis Walton, William Savage, Colton Bane, Manatonia Bunch, Curtis Richardson, which is adjudicated, Andre Hall, which is adjudicated, Kiara, Victor, David Branch, Lawrence Colford, Crystal Jacobs, Julius Hurd, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boobie Staden, Melani Everett, Mari Collins, Andre Bethel, Kareen Boucher, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamonte Mitchell, Keith Warren, Rayquan Gray, Dion Jr., Baby Dion, Georgia Devonte Lee, Alicia Mears, and Ashley Merrick. Now I say again, word is crime prevention.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cradle, for being here. You're here at every meeting and you keep, you keep the importance of what's going on in front of us and that's good. My question, I guess, to the interim city manager, there are a couple elements that have been mentioned in this crime plan. Shot spotter, increasing the lights. I think we need to be updated frequently on those things. And also, if my colleagues are in agreement, I'd like to get updated on our 911 call center. And I say that because a citizen who was in a, close to a tragic situation on Portsmouth Boulevard this week called 911 and it took 37 rings. And I know, I know a couple years ago, we hired more people for the call center. Plus, we increased the technology significantly, went from analog to digital. And I know because we had, we had reports from people that tracked the time of the calls and they were down significantly to just a few seconds. So if you can give us an update on the status of the call center, someone even said that the calls are going out to another city now that's helping. I don't know, so I won't get into detail on that. But we definitely need an update on those things. Thanks, Mr. Terry.
Councilman Battle, then Councilwoman Lukasberg.
Was the Sheriff's Department included in the crime plan? You, you, if you know, anyone that knows, that was, helped put it together, were they?
Madam interim city manager, could you, could you address what the question was, please?
The crime plan was put together with police because they are the public safety mechanism for the city. Now, there are several elements that describe some additional assistance that the sheriff's department was offering, as well as, you all know, with these student resource officers or school resource officers. And they did assist police with some additional visibility on the streets. There are some things that the sheriff's department, and I won't speak to every one of them because I'm not a sheriff, but they are limited in their capacity of what they can do with our citizens. So to answer your question, there were elements of all public safety in that crime plan. If they spoke directly to the sheriff to ask him, I'm not sure, but I'm sure they did, they did in order to incorporate the student resource officer's piece. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lukasberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cradle, for coming forth. And we hear the names that you read every meeting and you say that they're unsolved cases. So I would want our city manager or maybe have our chief of police to explain to us, the listening audience, you know, at what point does a situation become a case? I mean, do we need witnesses to come forth? Do we need our Commonwealth attorney to intervene? Do we need, you know, you know, how does this start? Why are all of these names that he read all continue to be unsolved cases? So if we could, I mean, and if we don't have a response for today or now, if we could bring something back so that the listening audience and our citizens who are here tonight know at what point does it become a case and how do we begin solve?
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, okay, Councilman Water.
Thank you. Once again, safety is a top priority in this city. It just is. I think that we, as a council, have been dealing with this for two years and some of the necessary decisions that we made were based off of safety. We cannot continue to talk about this stuff and not produce any action. Okay, so I feel for the victims that continuously have to deal with this on a day-to-day basis. I go to these neighborhoods. We just had a series of violations happen over the past two weeks. I think Mayor Glover and Councilman Moody was on site as well. But like you say, this is directly affecting us. We live in the community with you guys as well and we have to take some type of action. And I want you to understand that some of the decisions that was made over the past week or two was mindful of public safety. Like I say, we have a lot, we're going into summertime here. Our kids are getting out of school. They're going to have a lot of time on their hands. And we don't want Mr. Cradle to continue to come up here and read a list of more names, okay? That's not what we want to do. We want to be proactive and make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that no kids are affected, no families are affected, no crying mothers added to his list, okay? So I want you guys to understand that we work on a daily basis to try to prevent those things. And I just want to check with our city manager, like you say, where are we at with shot spotter? Can we, can we add cameras to the plans of not just being at PRHA properties or hotspots? Can they just be throughout our city? We have to make sure that we give our police all the tools they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms., the next speaker is Ms. Elvira Johnson-Williams.
Good evening. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. I reside at 3313 North Armstead Drive in the city of Portsmouth. I'm speaking on behalf of my concerns. I got the mic down my throat. Okay, here we go. My father once said, "Common sense." It's not common. It's not always common. And just because you're degreed, educated, don't mean that you know it all. Sometimes skilled laborers, which I happen to be a proud one of, hear, see, and observe a lot of things. I have listened to a lot of stuff. I've seen quite a bit. And it's so funny to me that council claims to be so concerned about public safety when all I hear is, "Where is the money?" Well, personally, I feel like the city has called us here tonight on a coup. And I say that because it's Sunset Thursday. The majority of the people are at Sunset Thursday. That way, you don't get, you don't have to sit back and listen to not 17 speakers, maybe 144. 144. That's a coup to keep the people away from here. What I have learned, and it hurts my heart, to see this male-dominated council constantly turn down educated black women. I don't understand how a woman can get an average evaluation from doing an excellent job, in my opinion, and it is my opinion, and get fired. When I was working, I used to be one of those ones that was dependable on the job, always there and whatever, and they worked me like a Hebrew slave. But the one that did the least, he got away with murder. And that's exactly what I'm looking at at this council. Y'all getting away with murder while you're stealing the money, in my opinion. It seems to me the only concern certain people on this diocese have is the money. So let me help you spin a little bit. You want to work on cameras, and you want to work on safety issues and whatever. Let's see, you got rid of this auditor, you done got rid of the city manager, well, we already know you're going after the police chief. We already know that's the deal. And let's see, we already knew that the city manager was fired before it was even voted on because that's on tape. Thank you, Councilman Woodard. But let's use some of that money that you want to put in cameras at all of these spaces, and let's put it where our council people are so concerned about, like in Dale's Homes. Let's worry about those areas. And what's that, Maple and Randolph Street? Let's put them cameras there. And when we do put them there, let's have you council members standing there making sure they're working properly. Let's not wait for the police to get there since we can talk about who we done lost. Let's see who's there. That's gonna, if you're gonna talk the talk, walk the walk. Portsmouth right now is in a state of crisis. I came here to let you know how I feel. I don't like what I see. I don't like what I'm hearing. And you got to fix it. You got to worry about the children. No more lying. But that seem to be all there is to do in this city right now is lie. But we want a better Portsmouth. I'm a proud person that lives in the city of Portsmouth, and no, I will not tolerate this council to continue to make a mockery of the city that I live in. You claim you love it, act like you love it. Have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil, sir? You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, members of the public, welcome to the latest edition of Ask the Portsmouth Turns. This is seriously, tonight has taken another episode into the disrespect of our time as the citizens. In all seriousness, that hour and 15 minutes that you all spent on a dissertation of whose claim, who said, maybe did, maybe didn't, five more people probably got shot, or stabbed, or robbed in this city. We could have used that same amount of time to go out there and find out what's going on in our streets. But you know, I'm a fair person, so I'm gonna give y'all the benefit of the doubt for right now. But let me make it clear. I want to know how many of y'all have bullet holes in y'all house right now? Anybody on council have bullet holes in their house right now? Anybody in the audience have bullet holes in their house? Raise your hand, please, because I do. When that shooting on Elm Avenue happened, that was at my apartment building. It's 15 kids that live in that apartment building alone between four units. Those kids have to wake up every day and be traumatized by what they heard that night on May 24th, I mean, May 27th, at 3:00 in the morning, when they were supposed to be asleep, getting ready for school the next morning. Can you imagine what that would have been like if I already short-staffed EMS team, fire department team, would have had to respond to a mass shooting of that nature? Can you imagine that? Because we don't have a trauma center in Portsmouth, the amount of minutes that it would have took to get all of those victims to the hospital? The closest level-one trauma center is all the way in Norfolk through the Midtown Tunnel. And God forbid, if it's shut down, then guess what? We in trouble. Because now you got more added minutes going through the downtown tunnel trying to get the Norfolk General. See, we could spin around and play this game, the wheels on the bus of the blame game bus go round and round, but the citizens want off that bus because we are tired of it. You go ask a mother or a father right now that has to bury their child, that did not, unfortunately did not have life insurance, how they gonna do it? Do y'all know how much an average funeral costs these days? A lot of money. And GoFundMe is not an insurance policy for those of y'all that may think so. So we don't want to hear about, oh, well, all of this with the city manager, dah 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 dah. We don't even care at this point. The decision is made, so what? What we want to hear about is where do we go moving forward to make sure our city, our 33 square miles of city, it's not always headline news every time the news come on? That's what we want to know. I guarantee you, after all that's been going on in the last two weeks with this city council alone, we have made, we have more TV views, more internet views than any show put on by any Hollywood producer ever. That is an embarrassment. And then on top of that, we like to say, not to go here, because see, I could care less about race. That's first and foremost. But when we want to go about how we look as black people, we are embarrassing to ourselves. We always wonder why we always are fighting the same old 400 years of slave fight because we still, some of us still have that mentality. We blame the slave masters for what they did to us, but then we turn around and use the same, the same deal on each other. And then, I'm gonna go here too. If you are a person in the word, I'm a spiritual person, but I have been in church, I know what it's like. But one thing that we cannot do is use our position as pastors, and I'm not throwing it out there to blame anybody, I'm just calling for what it is, to make a mockery and a foolery of what's going on around here. And that's for anybody, whether you're a pastor, or elder, or person that just go to church, because that is wrong and that is a shame before God, before you even go there. And if you are a man, if you are one of those people, and you have people that, before you, and you are, before those people in your church, they need to come up and tell you where you're wrong at. And that goes for anybody. If your family members in your house allow that to go on, they need to come to you and tell you where you're wrong at. So let me just end this statement by this. Anytime y'all want to see what's going on around the city, don't sit up here and die. It's coming to our streets. Elm Avenue is wide open, I'm waiting on you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, sir, please come forward, and you have five minutes.
I'm a candidate for Virginia State Senate, so that's the reason why I can't give out my address. I wish, I mean, I seriously wish I could give out a motion for every single one of you to resign and remove yourselves. I have been to all of those shooting scenes. The proof is already on live. I can't believe we spent an hour of our time airing out dirty laundry, listening to hearsay what somebody told you. And you expect our kids and the families here to believe in you to stop the crime problem? People are going through way too much. Rising gas prices. They can't even afford to go to the grocery store without being worried about getting shot, let alone worrying about how they gonna pay for their utilities with their grocery Y'all have lost it. Y'all really have. See, sometimes you gotta go back and find yourself and find out what you really ran for office for. Y'all made people believe, that's why they voted for you. Now they believe that nobody is to be trusted, and y'all there for politics instead of people in this city. I pray for each and every one of you. Because I expected more, I expected better out of leaders. Our future depends on leadership, and it is falling so far short. We wondering why people are shooting each other, we wondering why they stealing from each other. They're trying to survive while y'all live on government welfare. Their tax dollars pay for your job. See, I'm not too worried about the smoke and mirrors. I'm not here to look good. Because I don't look good, my people looking bad. I rode down Virginia Avenue, I've been to Maple Avenue. I seen people at fundraisers and talking about that on Twitter. But after another shooting at the last meeting while we was here, they were still talking on Twitter about selling our vests. This city is represented by leeches. I'm not being sarcastic because I understand the U.S. Supreme Court decision, public officials is supposed to deal with criticism. So I dare somebody to remove me for me speaking the truth. I told everybody at the last meeting, you continue to speak the truth to them because God needs to convict them. See, I'm not scared of nobody. God has set the date for my death. So I live fearless because those kids need for me to live fearless. Our community needs for you to live fearless and go down to the streets. Don't talk up in here, go down there. Look at our families' eyes when they are crying, talking about my son and daughter's gone. If it happened to one of your kids, it'll be cameras out there. If it happened to one of your kids, you'll be at their funeral. If it happened to one of your kids, you'll be asking for change. Sorry, the injustice is looking right at you. I'm looking for justice. The police department shouldn't be at it alone. See, you could fire the city manager for what she's not doing. Y'all should have fired yourself for all the decades y'all haven't been doing, nothing but lining your pockets. Because, Mr. Woodard, you told the truth. Yeah, people are getting paid off. Lucas Burke, you told the truth. People are getting paid off, but y'all coming short of giving out the evidence and the names. And I swear for God, I'm gonna find out each and every one of you who got bought off. I'm gonna follow the money. Trust me on that. I'm gonna follow it, and I'm gonna see who's telling the truth and where the lies is coming from. But, Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, I need for you to have a thick skin. Don't adjourn the meeting because people's feelings are hurt. You let both sides talk because you're right, it's two sides to a story. And we need more than ever for Portsmouth to have the real story with its people being told to you, not somebody who is dictated by four people. And guess what? Y'all created the system, and y'all managed the system because it turned on you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Barry Randall, Bishop Barry Randall, sir, you have five minutes.
I'm Barry Randall from the Highland Bitmore, Prentice Park, and Mount Herman section of the city. And I stated that for the record because I noticed that someone on council sent an email, I believe it was the vice mayor that sent out an email asking for me to be investigated. I don't know why. I said, I gave the three, two communities where I own property, then another community where I lay my head, and that is the Prentice Park section, the Highland Bitmore, and the Mount Herman section of the city, because I was told that the vice mayor sent out an email asking for me to be investigated. But I don't know why, because I work for mine, and you know, I don't understand. Anyway, real quickly, before I get into my presentation, Councilman Woodard, he said some things, and one thing that I've noticed as pastors, because I'm one, we for years told people that sheep are dumb. I choose to believe that sheep are very smart. But because we like to believe that sheep are dumb, we like to say things, and we'll bring a few of our members with us to say little stuff, and everybody get excited because we sound educated. But it was some part-truth that was shared in here tonight, and unfortunately, as much as I want Angel Jones to come back, I'm pretty sure they helped her with a lawsuit tonight because, and Councilman Moody, I know you're running for reelection, so they probably helped you tonight too, because Councilman Woodard stated that you fired Solomon Ashby. Well, if we're gonna be honest, rightly so, because the land that he talked about, it was done by Solomon Ashby and Dr. Lydia Pettis Patton, not Angel Jones. She just amended it. That's factual, and y'all know when I stand up to speak, I only speak facts, I don't give opinion. But I'm here tonight to talk about Parks and Recreation where I serve as the vice chair. When I was served as the vice chair and mayor, I asked for a few more additional minutes out of respect because I do have, that the citizens need to know tonight.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. As the vice chair, when I was appointed to serve on Parks and Recreation, I believe Vice Mayor Barnes appointed me, and I guess Battle or whomever, he wanted me to be the chair. And I think the chairs here, great guy, Mr. Joe Harmon, actually, anybody that knows anything about Barry Randall, I don't, you know, despite what y'all think y'all know about me, I don't really like people behind me, you know, you're not gonna bend me over. And the reality is, I like to be the leader because I am a leader. So I called Joe Harmon, and I said, hey, man, I think you should be chair. And he can attest to that, and he said, you think so? I said, yeah, I said, I'm gonna nominate you. But when we got to the meeting, Laura Armstrong nominated him first, I seconded. Well, come to find out, Vice Mayor Barnes wanted me to be chair because his first directive to me, and that's another thing, I don't take directions from nobody, which caused my antennas to go off, he wanted Mark Palmercheck to be fired, and he wanted Cliff Jones to be fired, who was the supervisor. I had to meet with Angel Jones, and this, our chair didn't even know this, and I was reporting back and forth with her, having meetings, and I met with some of the staff. And first of all, we're just an advisory board, but I guess they know because of my level of influence, and they can put me off this board because I had a voice before I got on the board, and I'm gonna have a voice when I get off the board. Because I don't sit at tables, I bring my own table. That's what I tried to teach you, Chris. But one of the things that you all have to understand is that when you look at this packet here, the first name that you see is the Portsmouth City Cowboys. I'm not gonna get into nonprofit, for-profit, because that don't even matter. But this vendor's list states, Parks and Recreation list of nonprofit partners. On the second page, and I spoke to this gentleman, so before y'all go running, oh, Barry, what's your name up, because you always want me to get beat up, I guess because I'm pretty in there, y'all know I can't fight. But big home is Eugene Swinson, who does great work. He was nominated to be on Parks and Recreation. I think he would have did a great job. However, he was blocked from being on Parks and Recreation because it was stated his organization receives funds from the city. So my question to the city attorney, that I'm going to ask to bypass, no disrespect to Stephanie Morales, but I think she has other things going on in the city, so I'm gonna ask her to bypass your investigation because I watched Rhoda Young live. Thank you, Rhoda, for being here tonight. And I heard the vice mayor say that he wanted an investigation, and I'm bringing the Attorney General here next month on July the 7th, and I need all of you all to come out to that event. But I need you to investigate what's going on, because if it is true that Eugene Swinson could not serve on the board of Parks and Recreation because his organization receives funding, then how is it that the vice mayor, who receives a paycheck from the citizen organization, can also receive funding from the city? That's a problem within itself. That's a conflict of interest. And I believe the mayor stated it tonight, I believe Councilman Paul Battle stated tonight, that is a misdemeanor. I began to do my own investigation, I called staff because they were nervous. Mr. Jones, you know, he spoke to me and Lynn, if I get fired, Mr. Randall- Mr. Jones, you know, he spoke to me and Lynn, if I get fired, Mr. Randall, they'd just have to fire me because he was being called by DeAndre himself. DeAndre didn't have a middleman, the vice mayor did not have a middleman, even though on paper, and I noticed that night when Rhoda Young presented this information, because on the last page, if you all go to it, it said the Portsmouth City Sports Club, and first of all, it says is a business, it don't say it's a nonprofit, it says is a business. And then when you go to the other page, it starts to list the CEO, DeAndre Barnes, and then it lists the president and the vice president. But after that night, we went back online and we noticed that the CEO was no longer up there, he's just listed as a registered agent. Well, if he is just the registered agent, then why was he the only one signing off of everything that he got from Parks and Recreation? Because nobody else signed but him. I got a phone call from someone in the health department because they were sent over to IC Norcom. And that's why I was messing with you, Joe, because I said you the chairman, I'm just the vice chair, but they were stressing me out because they said, Mr. Randall, we have the Portsmouth City Cowboys over here at IC Norcom. No one has a food handler's card and they're serving food and they're doing this and Mr. Barnes said they're gonna do it anyway. I reached out to Cliff Jones and I said, what he, what's going on? He explained to me that he explained the rules to Mr. Barnes and Mr. Barnes said they were gonna do it anyway. Mr. Jones then reached out to the health department and the health department lady said she was intimidated by the amount of people that were there at the event. And I can understand why because if anybody follow Mr. Barnes on social media, he always liked to, you know, say come over here to Death Row Records and I'm gonna cut your water off, he does a lot of things like that to intimidate people. But I need to remind the vice mayor that those people are wound up in jail.
But Mr. Randall, we, we gave you a little extra more time, but you need to wrap it up, okay?
Okay, yeah, I, I'm just about finished.
You need to wrap it up.
Yes, sir. So my question is, because I think a lawsuit need to be filed and if you guys, and I don't mean any disrespect, if you guys are scared because I don't serve, because I'm busy in the real world, okay? So I don't serve on boards just to build my resume. Mr. Barnes' organization had IC Norcom on Sundays, Waterview Elementary Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, Victory Elementary Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Lakeview Elementary Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Crowlock Middle Mondays and Fridays, SH Clark Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. He did not pay for those funds, but yet he charged the parents for their children to play. Had he gave the parents a free opportunity to be able to play for free, then I would not have had a problem with our department paying for these things. So therefore, I would like to know, and I would like, I've asked for it, I have yet to get it, how much money does his organization owes back? And Mr. Battle, you know as much respect that I have for you, sir, for my family, you knew me when I was in Pampers and you know I would never lie on you. And I will go to bat for you for, against everybody up here. You told me out your own mouth that DeAndre Barnes and Chris Wood was going to jail because they was crooks. So how dare you follow down behind them today? Ain't no, 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 because the truth need to be shared. How dare-
Pastor, pastor, you, you out of order, sir?
Can we ask a question?
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
My investigation towards them or me?
Your request was an investigation of your organization and the things provided to it by Parks and Rec.
So I didn't investigate anybody else, correct?
Not to my knowledge. Not what was sent to our office.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Councilman Woodard and then Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you Pastor Randall. Any, we're looking over your information here, anything that you want us to investigate, we can. If you feel like an investigation, you gotta be on myself, is, is welcome, you know.
No, I don't, I don't think-
We're here to do the city's business, we're not here to deflect or to deflect any accusations. No, 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 I'm saying as elected leader, I'm not here to deflect anything. If you feel like you have serious accusations, it, it need to be investigated. So same thing we did on this dais with anyone who, who insinuate or accuse anyone anything, we are here to investigate it.
I just want the money returned. Every dime. Because-
But if you take the proper channels to do anything, we will, we consider all accusations. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Randall, for your presentation. I guess a couple of questions. We did have big homies, Eugene Swinson was nominated to serve on Parks and Recreation. I was not aware that that had been retracted.
Oh yes, he was, he was not allowed because they said that they funded his organization.
Okay, so that wasn't brought to my attention, I didn't know that. Second, I guess, how many other organizations like the Portsmouth City Cowboys are allowed to utilize the facilities in the same manner?
Oh absolutely, we have several and that's what it's about, we should. But however, when we're in position of power, we should excuse ourselves for all propriety as Dr. Whitaker alluded to in the beginning, because you want people to trust you. So therefore, you should not, because one of the other issues that they had with the city manager that they chose not to bring up was that the health department made a requirement through Parks and Recreation and the vice mayor told her to waive it and she refused. Because he did not want to pay that fee. So these are the issues that we have. So what I would ask, and I don't know if I have the authority to ask the city attorney, maybe you all can, check the phone records of Mark Palmercheck and DeAndre Barnes. Check the phone records of Cliff Jones and DeAndre Barnes and you will see the text messages, the emails and the phone calls. That is out of order and not acceptable because that's, that's going into personnel. And I had to tell the city manager, I said, it's not Mark Palmercheck, ma'am. I said, the problem is, you all have allowed this man to do what he wanted to do.
Sir, thank you.
Bishop, Bishop Randall.
Bishop Randall.
Bishop, I do have a question, I just wanna make sure, are you standing before us today as an individual citizen making a complaint or are you standing here as a board member of Parks and Rec?
I'm standing here as both. And, and the reason why, because I hope that's why you put me up there, correct? On the board, no, 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 I'm saying to make sure that the citizen's stuff is being done correctly, correct?
I just wanna make sure that you are up here as a board member and not just as an individual because of the information submitted.
I understand, but I, but I also understand why you're asking, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm up there with you, I ain't like them, how y'all can bend them over. Okay, because that's your way of trying to get me over.
No, 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 that's not about that, I just wanna make sure that you are making a complaint-
Because I'm a taxpaying citizen and I'm also a board member.
Right, right, and I just wanna make sure you are representing yourself as a board member because that takes it to a different level. The reason I'm re, bringing that up is because we have had in the past, board members making issues like you're doing and I just wanna make sure that's where you stand. It's not to try to do anything other than make sure it's clear.
Nah, it, it's not that either, y'all gotta check the books. Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just got a question for vice mayor. So Mr. Eugene Swinson never served.
We, me, Councilman Whitaker and myself brought him to the table and brought him to you guys to be on the Parks and Rec board. What happened after that, it was a, and Ms. Deborah can talk more to it, but I do know that we were the ones who actually brought him to the table, nobody else brought him to the table.
As, as a point of, as a point of, as a point of verification, can we have some information brought back at some point to the city attorney, what the vote was on accepting Mr. Swinson as a board member? Because there are allegations and we wanna make sure that we're being fully transparent, whether or not this, this body approved him to be on the board or not. And if so, we need to understand that.
Just to make sure, all appointees are voted together as a group?
Yes, sir.
It's not like it's a single vote.
That is correct.
So, so there was no singling out. Now, that's all we do as council. As far as any issues or someone serving, that's brought to our attention through the clerk.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodard, sir, did you? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Madam City Attorney, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to clarify that crimes in the city are investigated by the police and then prosecuted by the Commonwealth attorney. My office will do what it can to provide that information to those bodies, but I didn't wanna mislead anyone that we would be doing anything other than what is allowed by the rights and privileges provided to us by the code. And so the constitutional officer has a constitutional duty to do those things and we will work very closely with our office, but I wanted to be very fair to you that whatever information we receive, we will cooperate, obviously, but that investigation and prosecution, if any, is done with those bodies.
But, and another thing I would wanna add, Madam City Attorney, there was some, some, some information that was provided to us today relative to complaint and I think it is very imperative that we follow through with the information and that we give a report back to council based on any of the complaint items that were submitted.
We have no problem handling that information and getting it to the appropriate bodies.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also the reason I was asking that question is because if it's a board that's bringing that versus an individual, that, that board should take that up as an issue as well and make a report to council on that. So, so there should be a board initiative.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, are you, you understanding of that's the process?
We would have to look into that, I do not know that off the top of my head.
Very good.
We would look into that and report that back to, to council.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Our next speaker, Mr. Steve Carroll, sir, you have five minutes.
Steve Carroll, 3112 River Ridge Drive. I'm not here to defend or condemn the former city manager. I don't think she was given enough time to prove herself. Now, I think it's really rich that we hear all this disparagement of her when the former chief of police Angela Green was so ruthlessly treated by this city. I think she is an individual of exceptional character. She has the gravitas to be the city manager over Chapman. She certainly has the character integrity. But let me tell you something. If I were sitting up there right now, and I think the world of Chief Green, I conversed with her two weeks ago, I would not recommend Chief Green to be the city manager for one reason and one reason only. She doesn't have the credentials to be the city manager of this city. And that's not a criticism of her, it's a reality, it's being objective. And bless God, that's what I expect from you people. I don't give a tree rats outhouse, whether you're a member of the red coat army, I don't care if you're a woman, I don't care if you're a man, I don't care if you're black, white or Hispanic. What I expect as a taxpayer is that we put the most experienced, confident people in the most important job that we have in this city and that's city manager. And you have failed. Because of your petty politics. We had a half dozen police officers in this council chamber the other night because little children can't get along with each other. You know where those police officers needed to be? We had a shooting that night. And you are the cause of that. I think it's really rich that we talk about $300,000 or $3 million worth of property that some questions been raised. But yet 12 years ago, 10 years ago, our school board got caught playing hanky panky with millions of dollars. And a member of the school board rationalized and justified it. And you know who I'm talking about. It precipitated a grand jury investigation. That's really rich. Our family visited the Pacific Northwest a few years ago on a family vacation. We ran into the same couple three times in three different states, believe it or not. The last night we were there, we had dinner with them. I was seated across from the other gentleman's lady, he was seated across from my wife. And you wouldn't believe what the topic was. What is wrong with your city? 1,500 miles away, folks, that's the reputation you have generated. You're an embarrassment to this city. You're an embarrassment. And two thirds of you don't deserve to sit in those seats, elected or not. It's pathetic. One of you, I took under the wing the day before the election, the day of the election and after the election, and I left you with this admonishment. Be careful who you hitch your wagon to. And you didn't listen. I expect professionalism from the people sitting in front of me and I haven't gotten what I paid for. And I'm gonna leave it at that.
Our next speaker, Melissa Williams, Ms. Melissa Williams? I mean, Si, is it my understanding that you, you defer to your, your opportunity to speak? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Melissa Williams. I live, I reside on Carver Circle in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a lifelong resident of Portsmouth, Virginia and a military veteran. I came before you tonight to express concern about the behavior that took place during the last meeting and this one today held by council. The behavior displayed was unprofessional and irrational. Council members stated they were upset and passionate in response to a vote to relieve the city manager of their duties. I'm wondering why council doesn't show that same amount of outrage and frustration when it comes to the overwhelming amount of murders that are happening in this city. Statements are never made to the press, nor is council ever physically in our communities making connections with the residents or parents, trying to directly come up with resolutions to the problems that we seem to be having for quite some time. Nobody's addressing the real issue. We keep talking about the murders, but we're not really getting to the root of the problem. And the problem is poverty. Where there is poverty, there will be crime. There are currently 16,228 residents who live at or below the poverty line in these cities, in this city, and those areas tend to have the highest amounts of crime. Since 2017, half of the black American population, 28% was living at or below the poverty line in this city. Where is your outrage for that? I see no concern from council when it comes to the citizens who live at or below the poverty line. Our city is slowly becoming gentrified and soon the black communities will be filled with more car washes and food deserts than homes for people to live in. And the crime rate will continue to rise. We will soon be forced out of our communities and we won't have anywhere to go. As long as the taxpaying residents are ignored and don't receive anything of tangible substance, the crime rate will never change. We need tangible resources, not car washes and food deserts. Unless something is done about the poverty rates in the black parts of this city, nothing about the crime rate will change. We are undermined, neglected and overlooked. Then we are gaslit with, while our emotions are played upon and nothing of substance for us is ever produced. How long do you expect for us to put up with nothing? If council put the same energy and outrage into the youth that are losing their lives like you did for a member losing their job, then maybe the citizens of Portsmouth will see progress start to happen. Lastly, some of the council's members are more concerned about business relationships than the actual residents you were elected to serve. There is far too much focus on popularity and not progress. Some of you are disconnected from the youth and are too stubborn to make adjustments. It's time for the old way of politics to change. If you wanna earn my vote, you need to produce 10- If you want to earn my vote, you need to produce tangibles for our communities. Otherwise, I'll give my vote to someone who will. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Pamela Wilkins. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilpersons, staff, and the attendees. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I live Elm Avenue in the city of Portsmouth. I come here tonight, I was here the last meeting, and I've been coming to city council meetings ever since 2011, and I have experienced different councils, and this is the first time I experienced a council when we, when I say we, African-Americans were the majority, where things can get passed that tried to get passed years ago that couldn't. So I'm here in support, however, of those persons who have been targeted to be recalled and targeted to be not voted on. Based on, uh, I want to talk first about the situation with the, uh, the city manager that was fired. Okay, Virginia is an at-will state. Any employee can be fired at any time for any reason without cause. Okay, let's get that straight for those who don't know that. And also, if I was in a situation where my performance on the job was, you know, wasn't what it's supposed to be or whatever, and I was going to be terminated, I would appreciate somebody telling, giving me the opportunity to resign rather than being terminated to go on my employment record. That's a, that's one fact. And another thing, um, the, the Council does have the permission to fire the city manager with the majority vote, and that's what happened. All the years I've been coming to this council meeting, we always had a majority vote which were not African-Americans, okay? So everything they wanted to go for, they voted on. Now that we have African-Americans in this position, everybody got a problem with everything. And we talk about our taxes, we got the highest taxes in this city, Virginia Beach Orleans, we got the highest taxes. Why? Because we giving money away. A $3,000, $3 million property sold for the cost of a rundown house, $150,000, come on! But you steady raise, they were steady ra, I'm not saying you all, this stuff happened way before this council. I've seen it, I've heard it, you know? And so, and yes, I'm gonna say this, and some may not agree what I'm saying, this good old boy system been going on for a long time. It's just their start with this council, okay? A lot of stuff was going on. The school board was crying for money for years, and this just was fully funded by these four gentlemen. I respect these four gentlemen. All of us got flaws, all of us make mistakes, but to criticize somebody, or to throw them down when they're making progag, progress, we talking about the crime in the city. The police can't do it all by themselves, but these men forget some programs, some money put towards programs to help these neighborhoods, to give the kids something to do, so they won't be pulled into gangs. Come on, let's stop looking at the forest and not can't see the trees. Come on, look at what's happening, what they are doing, what they are voted on, what they have brought to pass. We're not looking at that. We bickering like high school kids behind hearsay. Look at the facts. Look how much tax money that would have been if someone on the board, their property for what it was really worth, okay? Maybe our tax bill would have been a little bit lower. So that's not the only situation that's been going on in, in this city for years. Minority contractors didn't have a chance. Certain companies got to build the different stuff because of the good old boy system, okay? So y'all can act dumb, act like y'all don't know, but that's what's been happening. And I've been, like I said, I've been coming to these meetings since 2011, and I've seen it and I've heard it. So when y'all go to that poll, and y'all can see them pulling somebody, recalling somebody, and don't vote them into that, you better think about what we have now, because we may not have a African-American majority again. Okay? So think about it. Put your feelings aside, put the hearsay aside, your sorority sister, or sorority brother, whoever, you may want them there, but we need people that's going to do the job, that's willing to push Portsmouth forward. And that's one thing I heard about, uh, Ms., um, Chapman. She was trying to change the police force for the better of this community, and they want to get rid of her. They want to shut the African-Americans down who have a voice. Mayor Wright, he brought it to our attention, our tax money was paying for that Hall of Force of Fame, $100,000 a year, giving it to them, and we had to buy tickets to go in there. That was our tax money. But when, when that was exposed during his tenure, they wanted to get rid of him. So whenever we get up and spoke and have a voice for the citizens, keeping the citizens informed, they want to shut us down. So think about that before you go to the poll.
That's right.
That's all I got to say.
Ma'am, ma'am, I, as, as, as Mayor, I want to take some privilege, and I want to, I want to just provide some additional information. One, one of the reasons why we have one of the highest property taxes in the region, the highest, is because no other city in the city of Hampton, in, in Hampton Roads has 44% of their land owned by the federal government. Because the federal government owns 44%, 44% of our land, we cannot get any revenue for that. So as a result, you, you are familiar with budgets, I know, because you own a home. If you are operating your home on 56 cents on a dollar, you are already in the hole. We had a financial presentation that explained that. That is the problem why we have the tax, highest tax rate. The other thing that I want to make clear, and I respect you, Ms. Wilkins, but the reality is, this is the not, this is not the first time in the city of Portsmouth that we have had a majority African-American council. It is not. It is, it is not. Let's, let's be clear, it is not. That is the truth. Well, but it's, but that's, but that's not the truth. This is not the first time. And this council, it wasn't just the four who funded the gift cards. It wasn't just the four who funded the money for those families in need. It wasn't just the four. I believe if you go back and look at some of these votes, we voted 7-0 on those issues. In addition to that, this is not the first time. When I was on city council, we funded the schools fully to the recommended needs of the superintendent. We did that. So this is not the first time that, that, that the Portsmouth City Council fully funded the schools, and that's the problem to a large degree. When folks get up here and they, they, they give out information, sometimes it's better to seek out the truth about what we believe, and I certainly recommend that we all do that. The last thing I want to say, this us against them narrative, black folk versus white folk, how are we gonna keep fighting this battle? See, because here's what my mama told me, and my mama looks like you. See, the policy, the opportunity of us to work together as a community to overcome those differences is all of our responsibility. If we continue to look in the mirror, and there's real past grievances, I've been denied opportunities, many of us have, but if we continue to look at past grievances and carry them forward, how are we ever going to sit at the table with others to make it better for the whole? If, if you tell me that the confrontation is always going to be us against them, then it can never be we, and I don't believe that. I believe that it's about us, but we've got some difficult things we've got to deal with as a community, and I support what you say, and I respect you for coming here to say it. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Ms., Ms. Wilkins, um...
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Thank you. The comment that you made about fully funding education, you were exactly right. What the mayor is referencing is that that was not the budget that the school board originally presented. They went back and made an adjustment because they realized Council was going to cut them. This is the first time over two budgets that this council has passed the budget that the superintendent initially submitted, and so you are correct about that. And when we hear persons coming up here talking about the issue, the young lady, I think her name, I think the person was Williams, it is about poverty, and that's one of the things that we have tried to address, that education and funding our schools. So I want you to know that you were fully on point, and what you were speaking to when you said a majority African-American council, you are actually speaking to something deeper than skin color. You are speaking to a consciousness, and you are correct in that, that this is one of the first times where you have seen a consciousness trying to address issues in our communities, and because of this good old boy network in this system that we are not closing our eyes to, we, you are exactly right, we are addressing those issues. There are more people that die every day from poverty than gunshots, and so it is a serious issue. We are addressing it, and I appreciate what you say.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
So I just can't, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I, I can't believe we, we sat here and, and let the mayor antagonize this woman about her opinion. We have not done that to any other speaker, um, about how they feel about issues that's going on in their community, okay? Uh, we, we know that our city is 40%, 44% um, um, not taxed or, or whatever, occupied. We know those things, but we work on this council every day to make sure that we strategically are trying to bring programs, are trying to use the land that we have so we can have some type of benefit, but, but we get sometimes is pushback on trying to use the, trying to make sure that we are most effective in using the land that we do have. So we work very hard on some of the issues and concerns that you do care about, and, and fully funding education, like Dr. Whitaker said, we have done that. For the second time in history, I'll say that, fully funding education from the superintendent's request. So, uh, once again, I appreciate your comments, um, I appreciate your integrity coming up here. Have you, if, if you've been seeing from the last meetings, it's been a lot of talk about this election, okay? To even sit here and talk about your colleagues and, and what their future can be, that right there just, your integrity is out the window, okay? Every meeting we have, they're talking about an election. I don't come up here and campaign, tell you to vote for me, but every time I turn around, they're talking about it's gonna be a new council, who are we gonna vote for this November? That, that, that right there just shows you what type of persons these people are at times, okay? And you want to work with each other. You cannot try to dismiss your colleagues and have to work with them throughout the rest of the year. That, that makes no sense. So you see it face value, and I hope you tell your community and, and continue to fight for people like myself up here that care about what you got going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Ms., what we have is a shadow government, and we have a shadow government because it's not about white and black, it's about money. You have black folk and white folks deceiving the masses to keep control and to take the money. It's part blank. Some people is black as me, some people is white as the next one are involved in this shadow government. I was terribly upset when we raised taxes on you. You know why? Because we should have discussed it and said, why are we raising these taxes? How long do we have to raise these taxes? When can we rescind them? Here's a case in point, we have the Sessino coming, that's a large tax base. We got Frito Lay bringing the main office here. We got wind turbine coming here. And here's another caveat, although we have non-taxable land, every shipyard in this nation, the people in those localities ask for stipend from the federal government. All that money our federal government wastes is nothing for them to give us $15 million to $20 million a year for the operation of that shipyard. The same thing with, we ship more goods than anywhere in the country. But nobody's gonna ask the state, hey, don't you know what we do? Come on, we're not getting the tax base. And consequently, they ship those funds to other localities. So that, that's what's happening on it.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Just want to echo the sentiments from my fellow council members about fully funding education. I was on school board, and when we, when I was on school board, we had to redo the budget so that we can meet what they would allow us to get past. Also, the, the mayor spoke about, um, the, our tax base. That just means that we have to bring businesses here that will benefit our city. Car washes are not going to do it. He was a big proponent of car washes. The storage facility that's coming up soon that we voted against, um, last year, that's not going to help our city. So we have to bring businesses here that's going to really benefit our city and bring people here. I don't know anybody who's gonna come to Portsmouth to get their car washed.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You, you mentioned it a while ago that, uh, this is not the first African-American majority council. Then someone said the difference is that, uh, this council has consciousness. Well, I served with that other African-American council. They can't speak for themselves because each one of them is deceased, and, and I take offense because they, they, they were effective people, effective leaders, and if you go back and, and look what was done during that era, a heck of a lot was done for the city, and I'm gonna name their names. Uh, Mayor Holly, Bernard, Bernard Griffin, who served as a vice mayor and as a interim mayor of the city, Charles Whitehurst, Charles had a voice, uh, and is good, good friend of mine, Marlene Randall. Don't tell me that those people didn't have a consciousness. They, they were, they were leaders back, most of them before I was born in the civil rights movement, so, and, and I remember serving with them, and they had a voice, and when they spoke, people listened, they didn't tune them out. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, could I say one more thing?
You could say one more thing, ma'am.
Okay, I also want to say, this is the first council that have actually tried to address some of the questions that the attendees would have. Previous councils, if someone would come up and, and share their concern, ask a question, they would just look at, you know, then would say it, and then they would, uh, say, thank you for your concern. Or if it was an issue dealing with something pertaining to the streets or their house or whatever, they would assign them to, you know, uh, get their name or something from the city council, whoever the person was, was over that department, they would get their name and call them. But this council, these gentlemen tried to address right then and there, the questions and concerns that the people come up here and talk about, they do try to address them. I've never seen that.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I appreciate you guys, and you guys have my support.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Carrie Cooper. No, excuse me, Mr. Walter Carter, I'm sorry, I, I looked at the wrong name. Mr. Carter, sir, please come forward, and you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the members of Council.
Plea, please pull the mic closer to your, your speaking range, sir. Thank you.
Okay, go over again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Vice Mayor and members of Council. I had something that I was going to bring up, but after what went on, uh, I'm gonna deviate from that. The last two council meetings that I came to, it's very embarrassing. I know we all have different ideas of how we get to things and how we do things, but as a body, we should get together and come to a conclusion as to how we are going to. About the firing of the young lady, uh, it was something that I looked at and thought it was very unfair, and the way I heard it from the council, that everybody wasn't on board with what went on before the decision was made to get rid of the young lady. And when that happened, then it brought on a division, and the young lady that just sat down was speaking of the black people on the council, and I'm not rich, but we do have a majority of people that look... and I'm not rich, but we do have a majority of people that look like me on the council. And you should get together and work these things out before it come to us, which voted you in. And you should work these things out and not have a hurrah from your bench. It looks bad. It looks real bad. And I know the people that see this on TV, our city is in a mess. And it is up to you guys to get this city back on track to where it's supposed to go. And when it comes time to voting, I know all of us, that the vote is going to have a say. And to whatever happens to you guys up there, we voted you in to work for us. And I sit here tonight for over an hour, listen to you guys bickering back and backward and forward to each other. It does not make sense. And if you get yourselves together, you could be the best council in this seven-city area. But if you don't, you're going down the drain. And this city looks bad. And I hate to say so, but this city actually looks bad, and it's because of what happened on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Our next speaker, Mr. Coleman Young. Vice Mayor Barnes, Mr. Carter, I think my colleague, so, Mr. Young, could you pause for a minute, please?
Well, these are general statements.
Okay, general statements, okay, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to say, because it was mentioned last meeting on Tuesday, that it's people that don't like one another up here. And the truth is, is that I don't dislike or like any one of them. It's, we come here to do a job, and that's it. But the problem we have on this council is that we can't disagree without being disagreeable. I'll give you an example. I didn't vote for the city manager, but when I lost the vote, I was on that side. I didn't say I was mad as a mother effa. I didn't go crazy. I didn't say people was doing this or people was doing that. I took the vote, and I left, because that's a democracy. But when a vote don't go certain people way on council, then it has to be a bunch of stuff going on, it has to be corruption, it has to be this, oh, you don't like me. No, I didn't know these people before I came on council, so I'm not trying to act like I have a dislike or a like for them now. We come here to do a job for the citizens, that's it. That's all. We don't have to be friends, we don't have to be enemies. We just got to disagree without being disagreeable.
Thank you, sir. Did someone else want the floor? Sir, please, Mr. Carter, thank you.
May I respond to this? May I respond?
Yes, you may respond, sir. Have a seat, Mr. Young, and I'll call you back up.
Now, you said you don't like or dislike anybody up there. That's the wrong attitude.
That's reality.
To get along...
Sir, 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 he has the floor.
But I wasn't even addressing him.
But I'm just saying, he has the floor, you don't have the floor right now. So we have to let him speak.
To get along with anybody, and believe me, I hate to go here, I'm saved, and I know I'm saved. I know the Lord loved me, and I love God with all of my heart. And when you see a person and you show that you don't like them, you get a rebuttal right quick, because they're going to show, if you don't like me, I don't like you. And that starts something right there. What we need to do is to settle down and have respect for the next person. If you disrespect me, I disrespect you, and it's going to go on, backward and forward. And that shouldn't be in a city government, that shouldn't be in no government. You should be there to get along with each other. That's why we voted you in, and I voted for you. Today, if I was to vote, I would vote you out. And it's what you say and how you act, I've seen you disrespect the mayor. That is not acceptable. It is not acceptable. If you don't like what he say, you take him aside and let him know. You don't do it in front of the people, because you sent a bad, you sent a bad message. You shouldn't do that, son. You should be respectable. If you don't like it, take him aside and let him know, and any of you up there that don't like what any of you do, take him aside and let him know. Don't put it out to the public. If you put it out to the public, it make everybody look bad.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I think you totally misunderstood what I said. When I said, I didn't say I dislike him. What I said was, it's neutral. I said I don't dislike him or I don't like him, meaning I don't have any feelings towards him. We come here to do a job, that's it. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not coming here to say, oh, I hate him. And the truth is, the other matter is that he's the one who has been very disrespectful. He cuts everybody off. For two meetings, I purposely did not say anything, but I got mentioned every time.
I need to have order, we need to have order in the chamber. Will you finish, sir? You need to finish your comments. Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I like to say that change is hard. When you make changes, people don't like it, especially people who have been used to having things their way. And it's not uncommon that things like this happen. It's unprofessional and unethical and unbecoming of the position that we hold. But when folks stand up for all the people, and that's a majority on council, and then those who are the shadow government who have been in power, their surrogates get totally outraged. I have disagreed, I have voted differently a lot of times, and I have lost. But at no time am I going to jump into their character. I'm going to take the vote like we should do, and then I'm going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Coleman Young. Sir, you have five minutes. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Coleman Young, I live at 303 Effingham Street. Just have a couple comments. One is, I've listened to city council chambers, and the citizens come before you, and some view their, provide their feelings on government, some provide ideas that maybe council members hadn't thought about, or some might be beneficial. One time I came and presented an idea to council, and I felt strongly about it, I thought it would benefit the city. It was not taken seriously, but then later, a city manager came and instituted that idea and saved the city one or to two million dollars. I have one other comment to make, is that you do have a very strong asset here, in the fact that the Town Bank is headquartered right here in Portsmouth. If I'm, I hope I'm not incorrect, but I think the city receives one to two million dollars because of that grant. And, you know, you're sensitive, know that any other city here, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake would love to have Town Bank, which is the largest bank here in the area in deposits, surpass Bank of America, Wells Fargo, and Truist. It's a regional bank, so please, whatever you do, please support Town Bank to be able to stay here to provide money for the city. Okay, I'd like to just kind of share a story. What brought me to Portsmouth was I had a job with the city of Portsmouth in Parks and Recreation Department. At that time, there was Robert Williams, as the manager, Dick Davis was the mayor, had a very influential director, and I was in charge of, there was appropriation of money for upgrading recreational facilities, and I was involved in that, and being able to put forest lighting in, research tennis courts, renovating recreation centers. I walked into the woods when we plotted out Churchland Park, it was something very important. Portsmouth is very important to me. To me, Portsmouth is a manageable city. We have challenges, like we do, but we can do two things. I'm proud to be in Portsmouth, I love Portsmouth. As my stepfather said when he was in his house, I keep going through that doorway in a vertical way, until the last day when I go hard as I'll, and I'm going to go, stay in Portsmouth until I go hard as I'll. I believe in Portsmouth. Okay, the recent events in the last month have concerned me. All of a sudden, without any due process, we leave the city manager. Within the next two weeks, we hire a city manager without any proper vetting or progress going on. We had, then we're going to elect, elect a, or selected Ms. Chapman as a city manager. Okay, when she was left, what was the comments that was in the press? They said this city was a racist city. When Mr. Jones left, what'd she say? It was said it was a toxic city. It was a toxic environment that she dealt with. The thing is, I come to you for basically, you know, we have Ms. Chapman come, she's going to be here, you know, it might take her six to 12 months to be able to be functional. If we do have a change in council, then, you know, there might be a chance of another new manager coming, and that's going to take another six to 12 months before they become functional. And it just, I'm concerned about that. I think we've set back, you know, we've been set back a number of months or time period to progress. Things are too serious, we're not dealing with the problems that are going on. And what do I think the answer is? I think it's leadership. The leadership needs to be, the other speaker said, get together, okay? We have our differences, work together and be the front of a voice. You know, taking a rule or criteria of a very nice investor, Warren Buffett, he owns sixty-five businesses. What are the three criteria's he used to select the leaders of those businesses? Integrity, experience, and knowledge. And what does he say? Without the integrity, the attitudes don't matter. Integrity is what we're looking for for our public leadership. I'm not one to judge, I can only see the actions that you do, because your actions determine what your motives are. And I end up, I saw Senator Warlock, Warnock, that was, he was on the Steve Colbert program, just take one second, and he said, in an interview, I asked him, say, what, you know, being in senate, what are your priorities? He said, okay, I'm a pastor, every Sunday is in the church, the same church that Martin Luther King preached in. And he said, the verse that I rely on is John, chapter one, verse five. In the darkness there's light, but the darkness will not overcome the light. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Carrie Cooper. Carrie Cooper. Carrie Cooper. Our next speaker is Audrey Pryor Muizzi.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for helping me with that, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Audrey Pryor Muizzi, I live at sixteen oh two Sawgrass Lane in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm here tonight due to the matter of the firing of one city manager and the hiring of another. I served briefly on the Craney Island Commission before it was disbanded. I'm not a politician, and I represent no political group. My goal for being here this evening is to express my extreme disappointment as a citizen of the city of Portsmouth. I am disappointed in my council members, my elected representatives. I am disappointed at how you are conducting yourselves and how you are conducting the business of the city of Portsmouth. I am disappointed that without what appears to be firm justification, you terminated a perfectly qualified person for the job of city manager. I am disappointed that you're hiring someone who has not been vetted for the job, whose qualifications for the position we know nothing about. As a taxpaying citizen of this city, I believe I have a right to know who's going to manage it. Several years ago, there was an opening in this city for some position, I don't remember which one, but it was a high-level position, and some of you raised a ruckus, because you didn't believe that that person had the right qualifications for the job. But now that you're on the council, and you want to put who you want in that job, qualifications don't matter. I'm disappointed. I am disappointed that the job was not posted, and a nationwide search was not conducted to get us the best candidate this country has to offer. I voted for many of you. I voted for Mark Whitaker because I believed he deserved a second chance. I voted for DeAndre Barnes because I believed a young person needed to be at the table. I voted for Paul Battle, because I remember when I was little, you'd be down at the neighborhood facility helping out with those kids, and I thought you would have the city's best interest at heart. I did not vote for Chris Woodard, my husband did, because on election day, you stopped us out there, you spoke with him, and you convinced him to vote for you. I wanted you to know that I voted for you, and my husband voted for you, because we had trust in you, we had faith in you, and you have violated our trust. I am disappointed in each and every member of this council. I am disappointed because I voted for a mayor that I thought would lead, but what I am not seeing is leadership. I am beyond disappointed. I am ashamed. I'm ashamed to be a citizen of the city of Portsmouth. I was conceived here, born here, raised here, educated through high school here, and I am ashamed. There are a lot of good things about this city, and there are some that are bad. But your actions, council members, do not add to the positive side of that equation. I encourage you to do better.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker is Ms. Ursula Murphy. Ms. Murphy, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Ursula Murphy, I live in the Manor View section of the city of Portsmouth. I own a business in the city of Portsmouth, and I work in the city of Portsmouth. I haven't been to a council meeting in a minute. I voted for one of you. I echo the words of the lady that was just up here. I am disappointed in you. It was mentioned about transparency, so I'm going to remind folks of the history. The former police chief, Tanya Chapman, was terminated by a city council that listened to the officers under her command... to the officers under her command who convinced them that they had lost confidence in her. Read the paper, it's there. It was listed. The city manager that was just terminated was terminated without cause. You may be trying to convince the citizens that you have cause to terminate that lady, and you do. That's your right. However, we are entering July in another few weeks. That means we have five months remaining in this year. There is no need to appoint a city manager when we have a very capable interim city manager to take us through the elections. In closing, I'm going to say one thing, and one thing remaining, and that is, that the majority of this city council has done one thing that nobody else before you has been able to do, and that is to unite this city in the upcoming election to replace two of you and to recall two of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, are there any other questions or concerns for the good of the order? Would you like to speak, sir? Seeing none, thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.